So I want to start off by just give us a picture of the district that you want to represent. Because a lot of people might not have been over there. So what is it like over at District 1?
So District 1 is my home. I grew up in District 1. I lived off Woodley Lake and Pleasant Garden Road. It has a lot of history to it. It's where Dudley High School is. It's where Mornin' Side Homes used to reside. And so it has the original history, Warner'sville Community. A lot of our community that is invested as far as our elders. They grew up and lived and built in this community. One thing that has happened in District 1 is that we've noticed a stream of divestment. And so what I intend to do and my goal is to make sure that we keep District 1 uplifted. We're excited about some new things that are coming like the Windsor-Chavis Center. And that type of revitalization however. Housing and having housing that's interesting to youth has been kind of a gap that we'd like to feel.
And so growing up there, how have you gotten involved in the community work? Like how has your childhood kind of influenced how you've seen it change over time as well?
One thing about my childhood that's still connected with District 1 is that a lot of people that I grew up with, parents, friends, still live there. And so I've always continued to be connected because the people that I know that live there are people that I've grown up with or spent time with. A lot of my classmates either in high school or college, their parents still reside in District 2. So we still have that connection there. My parents still live in District 2. My, excuse me, District 1. My daughter lives in District 1. And so just trying to engage the people that live there, talk about the changes that we've seen. You know, I grew up in Randallman Road. There used to be a Kmart that was on Randallman Road that I remember have great memories of riding this little merry-go-round there. And just little nuances that have happened in District 1 as I've grown up. And noticing that those are slowly slipping away. And it's not necessarily for the good. We're not seeing revitalization happen. But more so some of those landmarks and memories slipping away slowly. Dudley High School has remained a staple there. Windsor-Chavis, I was swimming in the swimming pool at Windsor-Chavis growing up. I played at Bimbo Park growing up. I played at Rotherwood Park growing up. So there's just a lot of deep memories that I've had there. And I want to see some of that preserved. The people that I grew up around in those spaces still live there. And I want to make sure that it's preserved for them as well. But also thinking about forward-thinking about youth being able to look at that as a vital place to want to live and thrive.
So what is your focus in your community engagement that you do? So are you more focused on the youth or like what area do you feel like you're specialized in?
So I work for Guilford County Schools. I've been with Guilford County Schools 27 years. And so youth are a heartstring of mine. I do believe that engaging youth programs can also engage children and give them opportunity. We do lack programming in District 1. I think that Parks and Rec, you know, doesn't look the same as it did when I was a child. I remember going to the park and we had a park counselor there during the summer that offered opportunity just to play games, some simple things. But those kind of things have kind of gone by the wayside and not necessarily been prioritized. I would like to see some of that come back because I think that when you engage youth and when you offer them quality programming, then you also offer them opportunity. And so when we don't have those type of things available to youth, then you end up reading about certain incidences in the paper or hearing parents that want to wonder why we don't have those certain things available anymore. And I don't know if it is a matter of funding or not prioritizing funding.
And what would you say is your favorite memory with all your time dealing with the youth? That you would say like, "We really got this done there and I'm really proud of it." Or just like a favorite memory in general?
So one of my most profound memories, not necessarily connected to the youth, was with the Greensboro tornado. And I was one of the first volunteers on boots on the ground with ensuring that residents got the assistance that they needed. I happened to be at an event for National Night Out and a resident at that event, you know, remembered that I was the one that helped his dad get a tarp on top of his home. So those type of memories as far as my community work has been more engaged with, "How can I help those that need to be uplifted?" And I'm always in spaces of trying to position myself where if I see someone, whether child or adult, that is in need, "How can I work to provide that person with the assistance or needs that they have?" So it just matters. It's in different areas. It could be housing, it could be youth, it could be whatever. But when you look at the need of that community, I'm always wanting to see how I can put power in. My church is in District 1, so there's uplifting there. My parents live in District 1. My daughter lives in District 1. I went to school in District 1. So all of these connections makes me want to see how I can uplift it. I've done a lot of work at Dudley High School, raising funds for them. I have a yearly event that usually pours in about $6,000 to $7,000 a year into Dudley. And I let them choose how that can uplift that school. But just that alone is just one example of how I try to make sure that that community remains sustained.
So mentioning schools, housing, like the whole revitalization of the whole community. What would you say like actually being there that like this is like the number one need we need right now that people who might not be there every day don't see?
Well, for one thing, I was in District 5. I built my home in District 1. With the redistricting, the last redistricting, I was moved into District 5. I am now moving back into District 1 because I believe to serve the community, you must live in that community. It's home to me, so I wanted to make sure that I'm in there. I think that when it comes to what I would like to see, I would like to see more youth. It's an aging community, even with the spaces that I'm familiar with. Like I mentioned before, my mom, my dad, mom and dad's house is still there. A lot of their friends still live there. But we're not seeing that revitalization of first-time home buyers. And what we're finding is homes that are being rented out instead of actually being enticed with the youthful graduates from A&amp;T or UNCG to come and say, "I'd like to stay in Greensboro." And I think that District 1 could offer that opportunity if we had some uplifting amenities that we know the youth like to have. Because what I think is that they seek some of the things that maybe Raleigh or Charlotte may offer that we're missing those gaps in Greensboro.
And with that, how can the young people get involved with the type of work that you're doing? I mean, there are young people who grew up there too and as well, and they're moving out. So what would you say to them to either get them to come home? Or like say, "You can do this to even help the community from afar"?
So I do have relationship with North Carolina A&amp;T. I work with a lot of interns. And so I do get youth involved that way. A lot of times they want to get involved in the voting process or just community engagement as a whole. So we're able to connect them in those type of ways. I think it also, you have to match interests. And so with our youth, I tried to figure out like, "What are you interested in and what pocket can you fulfill?" There's always, even across Greensboro, not just District 1, there are places where gaps can be filled with our youth. So I think just engaging them for one thing, being here, supporting the endeavors that youth have makes them feel welcomed in Greensboro.
And then I see you post a lot on social media, which is great for young people who use it. And I've seen a lot of posts about the water there. So what is going on with that?
So Greensboro, Southeast Greensboro particularly for the last year has had some water issues. And we can't seem to get a solid answer from the city except that they do not have an answer. And I think my biggest push has been on social media is to bring awareness. I think a lot of times in black and brown communities, we don't know until the last minute that there's something toxic happening. And you know, I love our environment and I want to preserve our environment. And I think that we're the ones that are always impacted by it. District 1 has highways running through it. We have industry, a lot of industrial places that are built in our community. And now we're dealing with the water issue. We were told that it is connected with some back flushing coming from the Toyota megasite. And that's as far as we've gotten with information. I know that I have reached out to city officials and city leadership and it's been moms the word. So for me, the only advocacy that I can have is to try to make sure that our community is informed. And the more that we can get engaged together, then maybe we can get answers. It's concerning. And you know, we can look historically and see that most communities who are impacted by these type of toxic things are black and brown communities. District 1 is a black and brown community. And so I hope that going forward, we will be able to find some resolution. But we met with the city of Greensboro last December about this brown water and got that general information. But since then, we have not been able to get any responsiveness from them. Their response is always kind of, "Nothing to see here." And I hope that our community can, one, be enlightened, do your own homework. Because there's information actually out there besides my social media posts that can provide you with some general knowledge about what is going on with our water sources. And hope that youth can get galvanized. Because I believe that you all are probably going to be the most vocal going forward. And you would want a safe and clean place to live and thrive. And we're not getting that right now. So you know, my social media posts are, they do get some traction as far as awareness. But action is what we really need to have.
And what other concerns have you brought to the council yourself that still isn't getting addressed like the water issue?
We have an issue in District 1 with concentrated poverty. There seems to be a practice in Greensboro where we concentrate poverty in one area. And so you end up looking at areas that start to have divestment. Your grocery store is leaving. All of a sudden, all you can get are family dollars and Dollar Trees. And that is a pattern of concentrating poverty in one area. You have to have mixed-use housing. You've got to mix it up. And so I think historically Greensboro has protected certain districts. And they have piled poverty in other districts. Districts 1 and 2 are heavily impacted with poverty. And it's not that we do not want to support people who have minimal means. It's that we want to try to uplift them. And the way that you uplift them is to put them in spaces where they feel uplifted and not pile them all in one area. So District 1, when you look at the Randallman Road area, when you start to go by the Elmsley and Walmart area, there have been, I believe I counted, six affordable housing apartment units that have been built there. And it's strategically done because they get La Tech funding. And so you can only be funded once a year. A city can only be funded once a year with La Tech. Well, one year you'll get a build in District 1. The next year you'll get one in District 2. Then they'll come back over and do one in District 1. Then they'll come back and do one in District 2. And when you look at the history, probably of the last 10 years, District 1 and 2 have received almost all, but I believe one of La Tech builds. And we just can't continue to move that way in the city and expect all districts to thrive. And I believe that the incoming council should want all districts to thrive, not just a few districts.
And as a community advocate with your knowledge, what does your day-to-day or like week look like? Being out in the community, either talking to people? Or like what do, like type of committees and all those things do you do on a normal basis? Or even like your job that like will help you on the council?
So I have attended just about every council meeting for probably the last two years. My day-to-day looks like going to work like everyone else. My day starts at 7 o'clock on duty at Rankin Elementary School. And I get off work, come home, change clothes. And I'm headed out to a community meeting or a council meeting or you know, whatever the community part of what I do calls for. It can be tiring, but it's also fulfilling. So you know, I've heard people say, "How do you do it?" And I think that I get gratification from people like the gentleman who told me he remembers me from 2018 getting a tarp on his father's house. And so that feels good and to know that even though you're tired, you're still making an impact, whether big or small. So you know, I have been in the community. I've helped a lot of people and families to feel uplifted at times when they didn't. And so I use energy off of that. And so my day is team, no sleep. But I think that in the end, when it's all said and done, that I hope that I have been pleased through the community.
Leading to my next question, because you're going to be taking the seat for a few years. So it's at a point now, but at the end of your term, if you win the seat, what would you like people to say that you did specifically to help your community?
What I would like them to be able to do is for me to say that I'm bringing progress and for them to see that I've brought progress. I think we have been told a lot of things for many years and we don't see that. You know, I think that conversations and talking points are great. But when the community doesn't see the work that you're saying you're going to bring to the district, then they lose hope. They lose hope. So what I would like to be able to do is say, "This is what I'm going to do." And at the end of my term, you're going to see that there was some progress made.
And then for the people who know you in your community and they see that you're on the ballot and they maybe approach you and be like, "Okay, why should I give my vote to you opposed to another candidate who's been doing this longer?" What would you say?
I would go back to what have we seen? You know, and I think that when it comes to the work that I've done in the community, I'm proven to have produced. And so I think that when I get into the seat, I will bring that same energy and make sure that I am not giving out empty promises. Something that I know that I can't fulfill, but something that is tangible for them to be able to see. That is, I live in District 1. I know that we've had numerous conversations with our current council members about what we would like to see. And we've not seen it. We just have not seen that growth, especially in District 1. What I want to bring to the table is something that my community can see.
Well, thank you so much for joining me today.
Thank you for having me.
No problem. Hi Lily Bugs. I'm Lily Otis, journalism student and founder of Not Just Headlines. And did you know that 95% of the people who watch our videos aren't even subscribed to the YouTube channel? And if we've helped you at all, we're just asking you to do one thing to support our mission. Subscribe. Because we want to make sure that everyone is voting local, not just headlines. So Sharon Hightower, welcome to Not Just Headlines.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Absolutely. And I want to get started by asking you to kind of talk about your district. If someone's never been there before, why is it special to you? And just kind of describe the district as a whole.
Well, the district that I currently represent is primarily East and Southeast Greensboro. I have resided there over 30 years and I love the area. It's got a lot of potential for opportunity. And you see that. It's growing. It's close to North Carolina A&amp;T. The Gateway is right in my backyard. And so I just love being in the area. It's primarily a district that is probably about 70% African-American. I will say that there have been some challenges in the district. But again, it's really a great place to live, work, and play. And I absolutely see all of the growth going on and the potential going on for economic development and jobs. And you know, we have Barbara Park, Gateway Garden, Hays Taylor Y, MCA's. We have a lot of great amenities in East Greensboro. And so for me, to be able to see it grow alongside with the people that I live amongst and that we want to attract. Because there's a lot of things going on in East Greensboro that can attract young people particularly. So I'm thrilled to be there, honestly. And really honored to represent the district.
And why did you want to represent the district and why did you run initially?
Initially, I ran because that I saw a lot of things that the neighbors that I live amongst didn't want. And that they wanted more of certain things like, you know, maybe more grocery stores, more restaurants to eat at. But there was also some things going on with the farm that they did not want. Like, you know, they didn't want a road cut through A&amp;T's farm. They wanted to value HBCU. And because the farm is in my backyard, I literally live next door to it. I saw the issues that it was going to create. And so together as a community, we came together. And you know, I'll say fought against some of that. And we were very successful in stopping that road. And see, when you see what community coming together can do, you know, it's not really about one person as much as it is about being able to collaborate and have consensus among, you know, your community is the important piece for me. And so I thought, "Wow, then I can certainly step out and be that advocate though that helps push to get things done." And I've done some good work along that line in conjunction with the members in my community. You can't do this alone at all. But that was part of the reason that I started that. And just the other part was because I just wanted to make sure that we were there at the table. There was a lot of things that were also being planned. And we weren't really included in those plans. You know, we were kind of the afterthought, like we're going to do something and then maybe you all like it. But it became one of those things where if you're going to plan for us, then let us be part of that discussion. And you know, so that was the other thing that kind of drove me, I guess, to get involved more. I was already the president of my neighborhood. And so there I was doing things that, you know, we had different community events and things we were doing within the content of the neighborhood. We're not a HOA neighborhood, but we are a community watch neighborhood. And so we look out for each other, live in a safe community. We really do. And I think people sometime when they hear East Greensboro, they get the wrong impression of what's going on. And that's the other piece, wanted to let the world know. You know, this is a great neighborhood, great place to live.
That's amazing. So you feel like it has changed for the better since your time on council?
It has changed. I've seen growth. We've done some great things, built the Barbara Park Event Center. City Parks and Rec does this, the first event center that they've ever done. Yeah, they do rec centers, but this was an event center and that space stays full all the time. It's always booked and you can't really get in over there. But it's a beautiful space over there. Watch how it grow. Hays Taylor Y has come over there. And that's now expanding their five-star daycare to a second floor more. And so the city's invested in that as well, supported that. So I see a lot of good things going on. There's a lot of growth really happening. Sometime I think people just ride by and don't really know exactly. There's a black gentleman who has a, oh my God, Fortune 500 company potential that's over on the Gateway Research Park. It's right there on Gateway Boulevard. And he's expanding his business and he's building now a $28 million building. And that's a lot of economic growth. And so I've seen a lot of things change since. Do we still have struggles? Yeah, I'm not painting the picture that the world is perfect. It's not. And we know that. So can we do better? Must we do better? Absolutely. But I'm not going to say that we haven't had things that aren't terrible. They are some great things going on. One of the proudest things I think, and it's not a district that I represent, but it's the fact that in East Greensboro, we have the number one HBCU in the country. And we can brag about that, you know? And that to me will continue to attract young people in that area. So we have to make sure that we are recognizing the potential that that offers as well. And they're going to have to have somewhere to live. And we want them to be in East Greensboro. Once they go to school there, we want them to stay there, you know? And I think that's the continual discussion we're always having. How do we retain our students, you know, from over? You know, we've got seven colleges and universities, yes. But I will tell you, A&amp;T is just one that I think when you hear that name and employers tend to gravitate for their types of companies. And they have always said that one of the reasons they do is because of the potential for the graduates there and the workforce.
So if you win this next term, you talked about all of these good things that are happening over there. And that's great. So would you like to continue to keep doing some of those things? Or do you have some new ideas that you would like to build upon and see happen in your next term?
Well, I think that when you've got a foundation, I think you need to continue to build on that foundation. And that's what we have done. I think we've got a solid plan of things that we want to do in economic development. I've support small businesses. And I know that they're going to grow when the economics grow for the bigger major companies. That potential for that small business is growing as well, even in our housing. And our small minority developers, they want to contribute to the community as well. So they're out there ready to do the work as well. So I think, you know, once you laid that foundation of what you want to do, then to pivot away from that, I think would be, in my opinion, a disservice to what has already started to be built, you know? And so that's what I want to continue to do. Is to see some of those things that we have started come to fruition. One in particular, the Windsor-Chavis Noco. That's a $77 million project in East Greensboro. And while it's not right in my district, it's right down the cusp. There's a catalyst for change, for things that are going to come through. A catalyst project where people are going to look at that and say, "Wow, they're investing in that." Then I need to make sure I'm coming over and invest in those things as well. Where there's great housing, you know, housing potential for homeownership for those who want to be a homeowner. But also for those who want to rent, they just want to live in the area and they live around something that's good, you know, Windsor-Chavis Noco is going to be awesome. But yes ma'am, I think that we're going in the right direction. And I don't want to see us lose that momentum, you know? Just most recently, Mount Zion announced a $100 million project right there on the corner of Willow. It's in District 1. And I'm telling you, it's going to have a medical facility as well on it. And that's something that people need. Be able to go to a doctor in their community, not have to travel so far if you want to see. And Windsor-Chavis Noco is going to have the same thing in it as well. So all the things that we've been asking for, they're finally coming. And we have to make sure that they come. No deviation from any plan. This is what we have said you're going to do. And this is what we expect you to do.
Do things often deviate from the plans? Do you see often, like you say you want something to happen and then some outside forces come and try to make sure that it doesn't?
Sometimes you do, you know, because everybody comes with their own idea. I think community engagement is so important. You know, if you don't have the community at the table, then it's easy for other people to get distracted. But if you're there, they're there and saying, "No, you promised this is what we're going to do." And we want to see it get done. And we're here to ensure that you don't change for what you promised us to do. And I think that's important. Yeah, there have been some times that plans have been made and people have gone a different direction, you know? And but when you call them out about it and then you know what the history is and how it evolved, then you don't allow it to happen again.
And with those conversations that you're having in the community, are there some And with those conversations that you're having in the community, are there some concerns they're still bringing in that you're kind of hearing on like consistently about that you're trying to address?
Yeah, there is some concerns, let's, let's be honest, okay? And so people are concerned about housing prices. Um, you know, this whole housing affordability is a concern for people. We, um, we've seen the prices just skyrocket, but the incomes don't match. And so people are concerned that, you know, they get displaced. And we never want to displace people. While we want to improve our communities and appreciate the values in those communities, we never want people to be displaced out of their home. Um, you know, you've got seniors and we've seen a rise in seniors, um, now who want to be able to age in place. And so we gotta help them, you know, with their housing needs as well. And then we have the young people who we want to bring in. So we want to make sure that we have housing that's gonna attract them as well. Um, but I do know people are concerned that, you know, they can't afford to stay, you know, in their home or they look to move and they can't afford the rent where they're looking to move to. You think about twelve hundred dollars a month, um, which now is really kind of the normal rent. But, you know, with your, you know, deposit and your first month rent, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars is a lot of money when you're on a fixed income. Uh, and so those individuals need somewhere to stay as well in our community too. We have to remember, um, that at every income stream level, we, people need somewhere to stay. We want people housed, you know, from the homeless to the, the ones already housed. We want them to have a roof over their head because that's important. That creates neighborhood stability.
Absolutely, for sure. And are there any like District One specific challenges that you're seeing? Because I feel like housing is also a big issue across the entire city and the entire country. But is there any issue that people don't know about that you would like them to pay attention to and to help you get addressed?
Yeah, I know there's come up some issues as of late. We talk about the brown water, let's, let's talk about that. I know you've heard about that before. Um, and so it is a concern. However, it is being addressed at every level, every level. And I think that's part of what people don't really hear. Um, you know, is that, oh, y'all just letting it happen. Well, there's a reason and it's been, you know, that it does happen and it happens. But when you talk about housing over the city, that happens over the city as well. So there's really not one issue that's other than, I think, in District One. To me, what I see is helping to raise the income levels, helping change people's socioeconomic status, I think, is where District One, uh, needs, uh, focused on. As we're bringing in the jobs, we have to make sure those, the people that live in that area who are suffering with, you know, with poverty and everything are able to take advantage of those job opportunities that are coming in, whether they need some training. Because it doesn't have to be that you have to have a four-year degree to get this job. Maybe you just need, you know, just a certain skill set, you know, certification. And you're able to get a job that pays eighty or ninety thousand a year. That is gonna change your life tremendously. And it's gonna allow you to be able to buy that home or rent that place, you know, whereas before you were struggling with. And it's gonna help you change, raise your family, your children, all that. Incomes are really gonna help change people's quality of life. And I think that's part of the biggest challenge for me for District One. Um, and it's a majority minority district. And that means that the majority and the minority live there. So the incomes are lower, the unemployment's higher, and the poverty is higher. It is. And so those areas, we are still, we're addressing, I focused on those. The jobs that have come in, um, to make sure that there's training available for them, even offering extra incentives to the companies that come if they hire from those areas with high poverty and high unemployment, to make sure that an individual gets a job. Um, you know, and so I think that's one of the things that we need to really look at. Economic development is critical to the growth of any area. And if you don't have it, um, and right now what we're seeing is a lot of, you know, types of industries coming in where it's the Amazons and, you know, that the logistics type businesses now are very popular coming in, um, but they're sustainable. And so people can get a job close to home and that's what you want, uh, for them to be able to find something. And that's what's happening right now in District One, is that in the east side of Greensboro, there's the potential for growth. Yeah, we are the last side of town to grow, the way it ought, it should be, it is. But, um, I think as long as we are at that table, having those discussions with these, the people who are interested in these industries, then we have to hold them accountable to make sure that they respect our community and respect our people, uh, and then make sure they're provided an opportunity. And I think that's critical. And that's what I hear from individuals, how do I get a job? Um, one of the most successful things we've done that I can just talk about off the top of my head recently, in the last few years, we opened a public distribution warehouse out along Highway Seventy. And it hires a thousand people.
Wow.
And when they first started looking, they said, well, we can't find people. And I was like, there's no way that you can't find people to work. And I've been in the warehouse, I saw the kind of work they were doing. So I was like, there's no way you can't find people. And we had hiring fairs, not job fairs. Job fairs are great too, but hiring fairs, what people expected, okay, if I'm qualified, I can get hired today and get, you know? And that happened. And they were able to fill those one thousand jobs. And today, it's a smooth operation. And when you talk to people who are working out there, they're like, yeah, it's a good job. I ain't going anywhere. And so that's what you want in all the industries that are coming, is that it's something good for the community, but it's good for the people who reside in that community. Yeah, there're gonna be people that come from other cities, you know, in other spaces. But if those individuals who are right where these jobs are, have access, there's no barrier to transportation for them, uh, and we're making that possible as well, um, then they see the potential for them to grow. And, um, I think that's what I want to see continue to happen, um, in East Greensboro. East Greensboro is so full of potential. It really is the people, um, there, are there challenges? Absolutely, there are challenges. And it's all in how we deal with them, how we handle them, I think, is how we become successful at it.
And you mentioned a lot of the community impact, the engagement there. But how do you also take that knowledge on council and then work with other people? Because it is a collaborative effort being on council, dealing with all the different districts, but also trying to represent your own and the at-large of Greensboro at the same time. So how do you manage and also lead on council when you have differing opinions? And what has been one of those toughest moments on your time in council where you've kind of had to defend something that other people might not have? Or just a tough moment in general where you've had to, um, just come out and really stand for something you believed in?
Well, I will tell you, one of the things that first comes to my mind, um, is fighting for black small businesses to be included in the process of getting city contracts. And so MWB's Minority Women Business Enterprise is a program that the city has for that purpose. And we have been shown to have disparities along there that black, uh, businesses get less work than white. And so this MWB is designed to level that playing field. But sometimes the contracts that the city gives, and we let a lot of contracts, we spend a lot of money, water sewer, two-hundred million, um, you know, a hundred million here, fifty million there. And when blacks are only getting one percent of that, that doesn't change their lives economically, but they pay into the tax base. So it's to, uh, for me, is for them to be able to be part of the city that they live in. They're contributing to taxes, so why can't they get the work that they're seeking? They're qualified, they do, you know, all of that. But, um, sometimes those contracts don't come in, they're not fair. And so I've been the one to say, well, I'm not gonna support that contract because you don't have enough minority participation in this contract. And a lot of my colleagues will, you know, and they'll say, well, you know, we need to get the work done. I said, but sometimes, you know, you, you can't just say you gotta get the work done because you're not being fair to the person that can't help do the work and they've not been included. Um, and if we have that in our right not to be a participant in passive discrimination against small businesses, particularly minority, black women in business, then that's what we have to stand up and do. We have to turn that contract down. We have to say, no, it's gotta go back down for rebid to increase your minority participation. Um, you know, but a lot of times I'm the only one who will vote no for that. But I will say, if it doesn't meet the goals that are set on that contract, then I'm a no. And while it may be a great project that needs to get done, whether it's a fire station or something that has to be done, no, you don't have the participation on that contract. And minorities are calling me and saying, you know, Ms. Ida, why can't I be a part of that? Why can't I get, you know, get work on that? Why they make it so hard? Why they make it so difficult, you know? Um, and so I have worked really hard on that, um, that one thing alone. Um, several others, I mean, it's not the only thing, but a lot of times I am the only no for. And, you know, in the last few years, a couple of my colleagues have said, yeah, you're right. And let's, you know, support what you're saying. And I told my, uh, council members, uh, probably a few months ago, and I said, I need for all of you to go read the MVB plan. It is, it's based off of the disparities, um, where minorities don't get the work typically, or get an opportunity to be at that table. And it's been proven by the disparity studies we do every five years. They go back and look at how much money the city spends and then where do they spend that money? And we are always in the low numbers. And I know that that's not what we need to be doing. Well, I mean, we're always gonna have different opinions because we live different lives. So we see things differently. Um, but I will say that my colleagues that own council, um, have been, uh, how, how would I say this? They, they see at my side, just like I see their side. I don't always understand it and they probably don't understand me, but they know that I'm advocating for what's right, uh, and fair in a district that typically has not seen, um, you know, serviced the way it should have, because there are underserved areas, neglected areas and overlooked areas. Absolutely, they are and we have to focus on them. Um, but it is about identifying your needs and then showing what those needs are. I've taken tours with my colleagues through East Greensboro and shown them certain areas and shown them why things need to happen better where they are. Um, sitting down, talking to them about it, uh, coming up, you know, coming together with consensus to help make this whole city better. Because if one side is suffering, then all of it is suffering. You can't just simply say, well, the west is doing great when the east is not. The whole city needs to be doing great together. And that I think is something that I have said so much, and I say East Greensboro a lot, because I want people to understand this is a side of town that deserves the best. Just like you value the other side, we should not be a city, uh, two cities in one. We should not be. It should be one city working together for the greater good of all people. Um, and historically, that hasn't always happened. But I think today, I will say that I have been able to create that relationship with my colleagues. And I've gotten support on things that, from certain colleagues that people say, oh, I can't believe you supported that. But it's the right thing to do and why wouldn't you? You know, support things improvement on, you know, the east side of Greensboro or, you know? And so I think that being able to have honest discussion with your colleagues about, you know, why things haven't happened or what you want to see happen and why hasn't happened, I think you gotta be true to that. And I've found that that has worked quite well. Just sometime I'm standing up by myself, I may be the only person who, you know, votes against something. But it's a principal vote. Sometime you have to vote no for things because you need to put it there.
And then on your time on council and when eventually, you know, you wrap this up and you end your term per se, what would you like people to say that Sharon Hightower did for them? To represent them and their district and in Greensboro as a whole?
Well, I hope they will say that I did all I could to represent their interests. Um, I think that's critically important. I know we look at numbers and what the data is, but do you know what the most important number is? It's one, it's that one person that calls that needs some type of resource. And I have tried to do that, you know? And I hope they say, well, if I call Sharon, she responds, you know, she's come and helped me, helped me get to a better place, whatever that is, improved my quality of life. I just really want to help people live better. And so hopefully, you know, at the end of whatever happens, you know, people will say, you know, I know I could count on Sharon, uh, you know, to be able to call her, to get the services that I need or she put me in the right direction. Um, because I believe if I know something and you need to know it, I need to be sharing that with you. It doesn't do me any good to know something, keep it to myself, you know? Um, so I, I hope that people can say, you know, I could count on her.
And then if someone approached you out on the street and said, why should I give my vote to you? What would you say?
Well, I would say first and foremost is that I care about this community. I care about people, um, and improving the quality of life for those individuals. And so I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna stand in the gap and I'm gonna stand up. I'm gonna say when wrong is wrong, because I believe in doing what's right. Um, and I think, and when people ask me, that is primarily what I say. Try to do what's right. I try to do what people believe they need. I listen and then I try to advocate, um, for those things that I think should be fair and equitable, um, in our community. So, and, uh, I'm, I'm here, I'm accessible, you know, uh, at all times. People reach out to me, um, and I try to be here, um, for them. Because the worst thing in the world that can happen is you try to call somebody and they never call you back or whatever. And it may take, you know, maybe a day, but I always do that. I'm very accessible and you can approach me about anything, even if we disagree about it. I just want people to see me as trying to be fair and open, um, and an honest individual that's gonna stand up for what's right.
Well, thank you so much for joining me today.
Well, thank you very much for having me today. Um, I just hope that, you know, this will resonate with some people that understand how our community has to keep growing, you know, and thriving. And, um, hopefully get a chance to do it again, I, you know, and talk about it again. I mean, I could go into so much detail about East Greensboro and District One, but, um, we'd be here all day.
Yeah.
You know, so thank you, thank you so much.